Good evening. This is the May 9th meeting of the Committee of a Whole. And everyone, please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening to the council. I know we're here to discuss the St. Mary's ball fields, and I know some councils have some questions and some issues. So I will briefly state a couple of things just about the fact that this is a project that, obviously, my administration inherited. We do have, prior, I think, to recently, we have a project manager who is Donnie Caramella, who will address you in a little bit more detail. But any questions that you all have, we're here to answer them. And just want to make sure that everyone knows all the facts of what happened previously, previous to my administration coming in, and then since we've came on, kind of the timeline of what's going on. I know there's been some questions about timeline and about the fields being ready. One thing that I do want to state kind of upfront, and I wonder if this conversation had been had at all, but in my conversations about the fields, it was kind of brought to my attention, and I don't know if anyone's actually, if there's been any conversation about this, and I'd like to hear the council's kind of input on this. But my understanding in terms of industry practices with fields is that you give a certain amount of time for them to grow and to be able to kind of take, right? And that a lot of times that happens over the course of a season. So that was actually a surprise to me. I was a little, I was interested if that conversation had been had previously, because I think that this is, at the end of the day, going to be a multimillion dollar facility. The last thing we'd want to do is be short-sighted and jump on a field that may not be ready. And then we get to a point where we're catching up with certain areas that might be used. So I do want to kind of, I guess, frame the conversation in the fact that a lot of times, and it seems like, I think this may have been lost in the promises that were made previously, but a lot of times a season is lost in, you know, in a field, when a field is being constructed. And I just, I wanted to put that out there because it was something that I hadn't really heard, and I hadn't heard in this, in the concept of this, I guess, or the context of this project. So, and I know, you know, there, one field is ready or is done. The saw is laid on the varsity girls softball field. But it comes down to a question of whether or not do we want to jump on a field that is still a construction site, for the most part? And whether or not we want to jump onto a field that we may do damage to that will be catching up for years to come after that. For me, the city's investing three, over $3 million in this facility. We obviously want to make sure it works and it lasts a very long time, and we maintain it the proper way, and that there, that it ends up being, I think, the kind of facility that we can point to and say, and be very proud of. And I think that's what the end goal is, obviously. I just wanted to kind of state that upfront, that there was, has been this conversation. And again, it goes back to industry practices. And I'd love to hear what the, what conversation previously had been had, and kind of what the, what folks think about the fact that a lot of times when fields do get built, they lose a year. That's not to say that there aren't questions, obviously, that the council has. We're prepared to answer them. I know, again, that this project was something that I've inherited, and we're going to make sure that it comes to fruition and it's done in the proper manner. With that, I am going to let everyone know that we have, we have folks from the city side, from the construction company, and from CDM Smith, who will be willing to address any questions or concerns. I will bring up, I guess, first, our, the project manager on the city side, Donnie Caramella, who has done a great job for the city as a whole since I've come on in terms of water and sewer issues, and I think any capital programming and projects. He's been very helpful in navigating my way through those construction projects. So, Donnie, I'll let you come up and maybe give a little more detail. And maybe, I don't know if councils just want to ask questions, or if they want to go through a detailed kind of breakdown of where we're at. But I would like, and I hope that the council agrees, that we talk about what's happening in the future, what's going to happen, you know, what are end dates, whether or not we're going to lose a season. You know, I want to have that, I'd like to have a forward-looking conversation rather than looking back. So with that, I'll let, I'll let Donnie come up. Thank you.
My name is Donald Caramella, project manager for the City of Riviera. How can I help everybody here today? What kind of questions can I answer for you?
So at this time, do any councilors have questions? You can perhaps start on the side and go all the way down. So Councilor McHenry, I saw your hand first.
I was just, there's a misconception out there amongst the people, the residents, that they don't know if the park was paid for in full or not. Could you answer that question?
The park is not paid for in full, for sure. No. No, there's a little less than $1 million outstanding. The contract was 2.55, and I think he's owed about a change order that's in progress. It was 132, the work was done, 132,000. And also about another 700 and somewhat thousand still owed to August Construction Corp. as of this date today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Caramella, for coming here. I'll probably ask questions throughout. I was hoping for a little bit of an update. Mr. Orio gave us a little bit of an update. A few things that I wanted to ask. You've been the point person for this site from day one?
Yes, I have.
So can you give us a little bit of a rundown on the timeline of when shovels went in the ground? Or I know when the property, they took the fencing down, probably was the first thing, and then shovels in the ground. And also, can you give us the original estimated finish dates or the agreed-upon contracted completion dates? And then if you could help me, help everyone understand why we've passed some of those timelines?
Sure, absolutely. So the contract was awarded, I believe it was July 20th, okay? The, some of the contract was signed by people in the city August 4th. There were two signatures that were yet to have signed the contract. So we had an onsite meeting August 10th. As a matter of fact, it was, everybody that was, that attended that meeting is present today. There was a pre-construction meeting just to visit the site. At the contractor's peril and at our request, we asked him to start construction ASAP. August Construction started on August 17th with light demo, okay? Removing fences, ban, well, the banners had actually removed the weekend before by the league. But removing fences with demo saws and what have you, and preparing the site for heavy machinery, water trucks, bulldozers and such. That was actually started on August 17th, prior to the contract being signed, which was August 26th. So we could, to be honest with you, you know, the contractor started, but he didn't really mobilize until after the 26th, which was, I believe, the Monday after, which was the 29th. Since then, he's been working diligently. On September 30th, we had a flood that everybody's aware about, okay? The brook overflowed. It was due partly because of, we got three inches of rain, and the floodgate malfunctioned at the, you know, at the head wall. There was 30 inches of water on the site. After the water subsided, we had to get back onto the site and do some basic housekeeping and cleaning because the flood had done some damage. There was a little bit of delay there. Not much, I have to say. But there was also then, now we needed a plan to implement, to prevent this from happening again. We're not going to spend, not $2.5 million for the field, but add it all up. Add the money you paid to St. Mary's for the land, the money you paid to Barletta for their portion. There's a heavy investment in that piece of property. So we needed to protect it. And then we, so we, CDM Smith went ahead and designed a structural riprap wall to go along the brook. That had to be done. And that took, between design and actual, you know, building the riprap wall, that was about a month. It was from the day of the flood to, I think it was, October 29th is when we were working on that wall, okay? Of a cost of about $47,000, and that's part of the $132,000 change order. Best money the city ever spent. Because to protect your asset down there, at least you have some defense against that brook and overflowing. So there was a little bit of a delay there. Mind you, now, the whole time now, since this went out to bid, there was no building that went out to bid. So I'm going to turn a piece of land over to you, and I ask you to build a house. But first, I'm going to do all the landscaping around the whole site, and then I'm going to ask you to bring in machinery and builders and build your house. That's what we're doing. The nucleus of this site, there was a building, 80,000 pounds to be exact, with about 140-ton hydraulic crane to be brought in. Where was that going to go? Was it going to go on the porous pavement parking lot? No, it would sink into an oblivion. So what was going, what we were doing was holding off the pavement and leaving the subgrade and the structural fill there on that parking lot to bring in that crane. Then there was a scheme to bring in through the field two. That's why we hadn't done field two, because maybe we were going to come down Wall Street with this 140-ton hydraulic crane to lift this 80,000-pound building. So mind you, we're trying to keep this site open. There was no real definitive answer of what we were going to do with this building, whether we were going to go ahead with this building or not. Only until mid-April, it was decided that the building was cost prohibitive at over $700,000. So, in fact, we danced around this area. We tried to keep pavement not being paved. We had concrete not being, concrete walks not being done, fencing not being done. We actually didn't put three of the 50-foot light poles up, and we stored them over the winter because we thought, as the crane comes in, it's going to have to boom over all these light poles, it would be an obstruction. We didn't put those up. Only until middle, mid-April did we find out that we were going to have to do something else and not put a precast concrete building on the site. So there's part of your delay there. Endgrid, okay? I got the work order as soon as they started. I've been on it. All my emails, all my emails to Endgrid, please get on there. Phone calls to Mike Codima from National Grid, just a disconnect. So the work order we got from Island Electric, a month after, it was August, I believe I got it on September 24th for the disconnect to the building, to the power to the site? The power to the site didn't get removed until November 23rd by Endgrid. All my emails, they're all there, all the requests, all the demands, all the snappy emails to Endgrid. You know, almost burning a bridge with them because they hadn't disconnected the power. So there is, you know, there's, so you have the flooding, you have the extra work there. You have a water line that we found, thank you, Mr. Barletta, that was tapping, tapping a water feed that came onto the site that nobody knew about. There was no documentation on it. It was bootlegged off of a line. So then you have all the urban fill that we dug out of the property, that we went, we pushed back and forth on the property. So all those piles you saw out there, those were actually urban fill. It was brick, it was concrete, it was toilets, it was this, it was that. And that pile sat for a while until we could make an agreement of whose responsibility it was to take this. Finally, I pushed it off on August to take it. If you wanted to litigate it, I would. It was part of the contract, I thought. And that's, so he just, he grinned and bared the expense and removed it. At no time did I think that there was, there was delays by this site, or, you know, intentional delays. There was always boots on the ground. And I have to tell you, from the start of construction, which was August 17th, to the day that they closed up for the wintertime, which was December 24th, and there was actually one guy there the day of Christmas, doing regular lockup and housekeeping stuff, and that's when the site closed. That's that administration, okay? I don't see any problem with it. There were no delays. Now, take this year, the startup. The startup, from the close of the site, December 24th, the startup was supposed to be March 7th. I was actually having my knee operated on that day. March 14th is the day that they actually remobilized to show up on the site. That was the day. So you could say, for all intents and purposes, you lost a week there. What the weather was, I had no idea. I had a knee replacement. I didn't care for what it was doing out. I didn't care if it was raining, I didn't care. Three weeks I was out. So, I mean, it is what it is. I have faith that when they were there on the 14th, that they did what they were supposed to be doing. I don't see any, any real delays with, you know, with this time. And we're really only, you know, you know, really a month in, or a month and a half in, into when they finally did the startup. It's unfortunate that the saw didn't go down last year, but I don't think it would have made any difference. If you put it down November, December, if we were able to, if we were able to do the defined grading, because, let me tell you something, this council, the fields that you're talking about are two different animals. A synthetic field like that at Harry Delarussa Stadium is totally different than a natural field. Rules don't apply, the same they do for a synthetic field. You have, you have guidelines. A synthetic field, you could lay down in a snowstorm, because you're not working in muck. But in this field, I mean, the topsoil becomes like Play-Doh. As soon as you drive a truck over it, it's in the treads. As soon as it's against the blade, it's stuck to the blade. I mean, you know what it, you know, you have an idea of what it's like. You wouldn't do go gardening out in a rainstorm. So there were weather delays. Anything that I could really pin, anything really big, no. I can't pin any real delay on anything, except for the fact that one of the biggest problems was is dancing around that, the nucleus of where this building was supposed to go, and trying to put up fencing, and trying to do what we could around the building of that area, keeping in mind we were still putting a building in the area, and heavy machinery was going to have to come into there. I mean, other than that, I don't know what else we could have done.
I don't want to interrupt. One of the questions in regards to the building in the middle of the field, that it happens to be the concessions or the restrooms. Why was that such a surprise come pretty much March, that that was going to be not approved? Or, you know, why was it such a surprise that late in the game?
Because the bids for the building came in more than what was, what was left in the budget. You know, so I think what was left in the budget was a half a million, and the building came in at over 700. And, you know, there was no leeway for, you know, being over budget, or trying to put up a $700,000 building on that site. And at that point, it was, it was a moot point. We weren't going ahead with it.
When did that $700,000 bid come in?
It was April. I was, actually, I'm not on that committee. So I wasn't allowed, I wasn't privy to any of the information. I asked, I was denied. Even I was asked to leave the purchasing, the purchasing agent's office because Marie and Frank needed to have a conversation about it, and I was asked to leave.
In when, this year?
Yeah, it was April.
And you're the person in charge of the project?
Correct, but I wasn't on the committee for the building.
I think that's an important thing to note, too, for the people at home that are watching and for this council. It's two separate proposals completely, the building of the fields and the building of the actual structure. So I think that's very important to note. It was two separate bids, it seems like two separate projects, completely that were organized, in my opinion, a little bit off, which is at no fault to you guys, but still definitely a problem.
Yeah. That gets to a lot of the crux of my conversation here, is, you know, it is two separate projects, but they have to, they intermingle, they absolutely come hand in hand. And clearly, one of them is now a detriment to the project, the total. So that's, that's one of, you know, I would say probably one of the biggest frustrations is we, as a city, and obviously now as a counselor, we've heard a lot of the stories, and I really appreciate you giving me some of the fill-in, or giving us all some of the fill-in. But, you know, as I would expect, you know, you're the project manager. I can't understand why you wouldn't have been more involved in it. But these two, these two pieces need to come together. So I'm trying to find out, is there an issue with the purchasing department? Is there an issue with the people that approved the bid originally? Is there an issue with the way the bids went out? Because someone, you know, someone should be held responsible. I'm not saying we go, you know, getting rid of people or anything like that, but someone needs to be held responsible for the fact that this is messed up. It's not right. Is it your fault? Absolutely not. But the bids, if we knew about these bids in November, October of last year, or January of this year, and we're finding out, and we're saying in March or April, that these are not going to work, we should have known that a long time ago. You should have known that a long time ago. Because we heard it. I heard it from afar, I heard it as a spectator, that, wow, these bids are over, they're crazy. Why do they go out separately? Is that standard protocol? Is that standard operating procedures? Is that, you know, is that normal?
Counselor, you hit the nail on the head when you said, why do they, why do they go out separately? I think what should have happened, and what we, I think, in looking back, we should have, they should have gone out together, and it should have been a package deal. And I think the council can appreciate the fact that when I, when I heard that there would be a $750,000 price tag to concession stand and restrooms and storage bays, that I had serious cause for concern and did not want to see that happen, because I did think that it was a premium, and in fact, probably more of a luxury when you look at the state of our DPW building, the state of our other schools, and we need air conditioning and roofs on schools. So in kind of context of the big picture, looking at spending $750,000 on concession stand, restrooms, and storage bays caused concern. And that, but I think going back to your point, it should have been bid out together. And so part of what Donnie had mentioned about not being able to be on the, be in the room with the purchasing agent is just the fact that there's a bid committee, and I know we have folks that could probably speak to it a little bit more in depth, but there are very specific and particular rules in terms of the bid process and, you know, how that works. And you're absolutely correct, that project manager should probably know everything, but the fact, the fact was that these are two different bids put out separately, and that was done, you know, obviously before, before my time. But in hindsight, I think that is one of the, one of the important facts to kind of keep in mind.
And thank you. And so I'll probably, like I said, I may have some more questions. But one of the, I certainly don't disagree with refusing to pay $750,000 for concession stands and toilets and storage, considering that the leagues or the people that have used the property for the last 30 to 40 years have used a wooden snack shack and portable toilets and portable storage containers. Certainly, the amenities could be nicer, but not for $750,000. So I would never agree to that, and I'm glad that that was refused, in the hopes that the project would continue to move on. So the other big piece of accountability that, you know, and this is where we're asking the questions, because we, a lot of, the city has been asking the questions for a number of months now, is knowing that, and this may be more directed towards the contractors and more directed towards, certainly if you're in charge of the project, knowing that there's a, they're behind. And like you said, nothing was out of the norm, completely out of the ordinary. You expect, anytime you encounter a project, there's always going to be some sort of delay or some sort of issue. You open up a wall in your house, something is bound to happen. We all know that. But knowing that, that that's kind of the norm, and knowing that most of the big issues happened before the new year, which was probably great. You found the issue with the water, the, going, being next to a creek, imagine that the creek would overflow. Knowing that, I know, I understand what they mobilized. I was on the phone March 1st with the Director of Recreation, knowing that we may, hoping that there'd be some mobilization on May 1st, March 1st. Nothing happened. March 7th, I was under the impression that there was going to be some mobilization. There was no one there, going by the project, no one there. Like you said, you were getting a knee operation. But March 14th, I think there was finally some work, workers on the site, two weeks into March. I mean, granted, we had the most mild winter on record, one of the most mild winters on record. I don't know why we wouldn't have had a little bit of a greater sense of urgency to get to the project a little earlier, but we didn't. But now we're into April, and now it's May, of course. But in April, we're seeing these delays happening. We're seeing that we're probably not, certainly not happening April 1st. No one's playing a game on April 1st. The high school's not going to get on that field, and this project's not going to be done. Is, was there, is there any real sense of urgency from the contractor? Is there any real sense of urgency from our city to put some pressure on the contractor to say, we're behind? Probably some of your issues, maybe some of ours. What are we going to do? Are we there a little late after 2 o'clock? I mean, because I drove by the project, many of our constituents have driven by the project, plenty of daylight out there, nothing being done. Certainly nothing being done on the weekends, we all know that. Imagine that in the real world. I can't imagine people not working on Saturdays or Sundays, but that's, I guess, above the expectation. Knowing that we're this far behind, is there any real pressure? We just got the saw laid down, and potentially, there could be games played from the high school team on one of the fields. Going on a, like you said, going, going on a construction site with no restrooms, no real markings in the, in the, in the parking lots to bring any, you know, cars on. We're way behind. So, you know, maybe it's May 9th. I don't see anyone going on that field for maybe another week. So that's six, seven weeks for one field, and it's really an incomplete project. It's kind of like putting, it's kind of like building a house and not having a restroom in there and saying, go move in, you know?
May I make one point? The April 1st deadline, which was field number one. If the deadline was April 1st for the contractor to turn it over to the city, that means that theoretically, he could have laid the saw down on March 30th. March, April 1st, you could not play on that field.
I want to interrupt you there, just, and this isn't to you. If I was to ask a contractor, or if I was to get a date of completion on a project, concrete for that matter. If you're telling me that the completion date would be when the concrete is poured, that it's turned over, and you're expecting people to walk on wet concrete, that's, that's not correct. You would expect it to cure, you would expect the concrete to be finished, the same as if you were to ask someone to paint a house, or whatever it may be, to use something. You would expect it to be complete. So April 1st, if that's the completion date, it would be complete and ready to be turned over, not just because the saw is laid down.
Turned over and playable are two different things. Please, listen to me. If you read it, interpret it, turning it over and playing on it are absolutely two different things. So you can turn it over, but it still has to take root. Now, two, three weeks to play a girls' softball game? Probably. But any real hard playing? Absolutely not. You're just going to waste your money. It's just, the field will not, you know, the saw is not going to take. Now, I'll read it. "Field one, limited work. All work associated with field one, including and not limited to the field lighting system, including transformer and power lights of the field, grading, looming, sawing, clay fill, intract, fences, field apparatus, irrigation system, and all the work will be fully operational." So does that mean the grass needs to be operated, operational? I mean, I don't know. It's all a host of interpretation, however you want to see it. Now, mind you, would I love to deliver the product on April 1st? Absolutely. But I can tell you right now, we were not sitting there. You say, well, you didn't see a lot of work being done. It's a tough site to sit, see all the work that's being done. It's a big site, but after the phone calls that I got from some of the abutters, nasty phone calls, swearing about work being done after 5 o'clock, contractor to be there and at 6 o'clock. Do you really think that I was going to have contractors there after 5? No way, okay? Were you guys going to have them there Saturday and Sunday? I don't think so. That wasn't going to happen. Because I got called out many times because they were working there after 5 o'clock. And I would tend to think, I don't want to assume, but I would have to say that I would assume that Saturdays and Sundays would be prohibitive, too. So, no. I mean, you have to understand, it's not like you're working in the middle of, you know, each cupcake someplace with no people that are trying to live their lives, hang out their laundry, and do their, you know, do the rest. I mean, every machinery driving on the site with a lot of noise. And that eight-foot fence doesn't do, which is, you know, which has only been there since the late of last year, doesn't do a lot to buffer any sound. So, I mean, it's up to you. So, I mean, it's up to you. If you want me to have them work late into the night, as far as daylight will allow, and if you want me to have them work Saturdays and Sundays, I could, I could, I could probably manage that. I wish somebody said something sooner, because I would've had them do it. But then, I don't wanna take any phone calls from the abutters. I will not answer their calls.
Thank you for the information. Just a point of information for everybody. We have about 20 minutes left in this meeting. I know that Counselor Haas has some questions. I also know that Counselor Patch, who is the ward counselor, has several questions. So, I'm gonna allow Counselor Patch to ask, and then Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Donnie. But, there's, a lot of what you say is true, but I disagree with a lot of things that you put forth here. First of all, as of last year, first of all, the money, money part. The fields are all paid for. The only thing that, that basically is not paid for was the, and I'm not gonna say concession stand, because a lot of people get the wrong impression when you say concession stand. It's a men's room, ladies' room, a storage building, and also, part of it will be a concession stand. So, it's a multi-use building. I was surprised, that's, that was five, I think we was putting in for like $500,000. And I, I agree with the mayor and Counselor Keith, $700,000, too much, too much for that. But, for the delays, I can't, I don't agree that that was the reason for the delays. That park, when it started last, last year in December, December or November, they, they were, very few people working at that time, very few. I go, I go by there at least two or three times a day, just a frequent route, and I always look. And, and I also had information that they had put sod, not sod, long, down dirt on the field number one, the high school field, in December. Is that true?
That's correct.
To get, it was already, for the sod?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, they, for some reason, they didn't put the sod down, they, they closed up shop. And it was a beautiful December. But now, we get back, now we get into this year. It turns out that they put down the, the wrong dirt. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct. And they, instead of waiting for the results of the sod, the soil, they decided to put it down, which was too many rocks and not enough sand.
No, it was, no rocks.
Well, not enough sand.
Not enough sand.
And, and it wouldn't be good for...
Drainage.
Drainage. So, now you're going into, I don't know what, what month, they, they just, the tests finally come back. So, now the contractor has to dig up, had to dig up the field, correct?
The test came back January 20th.
January 20th. So, now they, they had to dig up the field and put more sand in it, and this, this is their delay. This was their fault.
It was, it was definitely, when the test came back January 20th, we were on the contractor to find out how, what we're gonna do to resolve this problem. And there, Scott took over for me. He was working with Peter to get to some resolve, Scott and CDM Smith, to get to some resolve, how to make this situation right. Were you gonna take it all up? Were you gonna remix it? What was gonna happen with it? Were you gonna till it into the, into the field and then, you know, obviously damage the irrigation lines? So, this is what was going on. We had a meeting February 23rd.
I wish I could've attended, but go ahead.
No, that was February 23rd. That was upstairs, in the, in the, in the, in the, good one though. So, February 23rd to discuss this, and we have other open issues. And at that time, there was still, there was really no resolve to that issue.
Right. So, now, let's, I, I don't have much time here, so I wanna, I got a few points here. So, basically, the contractor, it was his fault. He tried to pull a fast one, throw some cheap dirt in there.
No, he didn't, honestly...
And, and, and not do, not do what he was supposed to do.
No.
Okay.
If you wanna blame, if you wanna say somebody tried to pull a fast one, could've been the subcontractor, which was Aggrisource. But, to prove that, I don't know if he could. He did all the work of the mixing, he did all the work of the mixing. It's just the mix wasn't, wasn't, the, the, the formula or the recipe wasn't exactly right.
But, you know, and I'm, I'm not really, I had very good conversations with Peter here, as far as complaints and taking care of people. I'm not really after the contractor. My main concern is the 700 kids that play ball down there and their parents, who are all over the city now going, trying to, trying to get games and fields that aren't...
I can imagine.
Aren't in good shape. But anyways, to get back to this field, so now you have a delay there. So, I wanna know, now, you're talking, now, I believe they had, you had a meeting in February? You had a meeting in February?
February 23rd.
And, did the contractor say that he could get the field done by April 29th?
I don't remember what his answer, I don't, I honestly don't. I just don't. I don't remember those.
Well, and, and I, and I also, Donnie, no disrespect to you, but I, I, as far as a field being accepted, that means playing on it. I don't care what you say. That means, April 1st, that field was supposed to be ready to be played on. And I just wanna know from the city solicitor now, if we can find him after that date of April 1st, I believe, I don't know if it's, if, if there's a, a clause in the contract, because I don't think he, I don't know if he had other jobs, I don't think he put the manpower down there, or, and, and like you say, I had my knee operated last, last June, and I know what you went through, and you couldn't be there. That's not your fault. But, who was watching while you were gone?
Well, you're talking about a three to four week, you're talking about a month period of time. I could honestly say, Charlie, that, that the, the year prior, I really do think that, I think that they had as many boots on the ground as necessary.
When?
Well, we have this...
The last two weeks, yes.
We have this, we have this time sheets. We can go and put it on a spreadsheet and show every man and every day and every hour that he worked, and see what, what, what it, what it looks like.
Yeah, but I saw it with my own eyes. I think Counselor Keith will, and I think any other counselor went by there will tell you, it, it, most of the days there, there was probably two guys working.
Oh, no.
Oh, I strongly disagree with you.
Pick a day.
I, I, no. Up until the last two weeks.
Pick a day.
Up until the last two weeks. But, let's get into, let's get into, has, has electricity been tied in yet?
No.
No, it hasn't been tied in yet?
No.
Why's that?
National Grid and Verizon. Verizon's on strike, the National Grid. They have, they actually had somebody available, but I don't have a new poll yet from Verizon.
Okay, is anybody working on that?
Oh, yeah. You could, I could pull you a stack of emails, that tech, on all the banter back and forth between me and National Grid, and calling Walt, the Walt Damm office, and emailing the Walt Damm office, Robert Lundberg, who's fully removed from the Malden, Malden location.
Well, that's where, you know, I wish, I wish, I wish you came before...
We had the same problem with the stadium though.
Listen, oh, sorry. I wish you came, I wish that the counselors could've got, we could've got more involved and help you with this situation. We were in the dark too. But, I, I just want, I, let's get one thing straight here. The most important thing is you got a girls' Revere High softball team. And it would be awful nice for those seniors to be able to play a couple of home games. They're all, they're getting down to the nitty gritty here. And they, and they try to play a couple of home games in Ambrose Park, and the field just wasn't adequate for the play softball. So, they're, they're back doing away games again. So, I wanna know if we can, what is the focus in getting that field ready for the high school to play at least a couple, two or three home games at the end of this season? Is that gonna be?
Counselor Patch, I can't, I can't speak for their scheduling this season. I don't follow baseball, nor do I follow softball.
Well, we're talking, we're talking by like May 16th.
I think that's really a question for the contractor. As far as I'm concerned, I make sure that they're there, I make sure that they're supposed to, they're doing what they're supposed to do by the contract. And, you know, as far as them, I mean, I'm pushing them as much as I can. I've asked them for a second crew. He says he's gonna free me up a, a crew from his Brookline, where he's at, Brookline, and bringing in, bringing in another crew. But, you know, he also says, well, they're also gonna be on top of each other. Well, maybe we can work something out where people are working on a field and people are working on the parking lot. I don't know. I mean, but it's not like, it's not like we're, we're ignoring it.
Well, I, I, can the contractor give me an answer? Where's the contractor? Like, right here, Peter.
You wanna know if you can play on that field?
When? Date?
You can play on that field whenever you like. It's not my recommendation. You spent millions of dollars, you should let it grow in. You want it to last, you should let it grow in for a season. That's how we do every job, okay? You don't let the roots grow in, you put players out there, you're wasting your money. As far as I'm concerned, the benches are going in tomorrow, the bleachers are starting tomorrow, they'll be done in a few days. At my expense, I paved the parking lot for you guys so they'd have a parking lot to, to use, which was not part of my condition for April 1st. So, it's really up to you guys.
Well, they, let's put it this way. The only really damage that could be done on playing on that field is through the sod. And that, that is very cheap replacement to a, a, is it? I mean, really, that's the only damage that can be actually done, is the sod?
Yeah, your sod won't root, it won't stand up to play if you don't let the roots grow in.
Well, it's been growing, it's been growing now for two and a half weeks.
No, it has not. Everything's dormant right now. It's not warm enough for grass to grow. Everything's been dormant. You've had nothing but rain, which we've been working through.
Which is great for sod.
Yeah, but the may have to have, the ground temperature has to be like 60 degrees or 58 degrees for the...
Point of roots, point of information.
Well, I just want, I wanna, I, I have one other issue, but I, on the sod here...
The sod's down.
I, I would, I would hope that to the mayor's office, that the, the high school team would, would play a couple of home games there, be able to play a couple of home games there, and, and if there's a little damage to the sod, I'm sure the, the city council will vote to pave, to replace that sod or whatever. But, if that's the, if that's the only problem of not playing, I, I strongly recommend that you offer...
You've got some liability issues too. You want to take over that section of the field.
Well, you know, you haven't, you haven't lived up to the contract.
That is absolutely...
Counselor Patch, I believe Counselor Keith has a point.
Point of information.
All right, point, go ahead, Counselor Keith, but I wanna come back. I got one more.
I just, and I'll, once again, I'll try and make it quick. This, this gets me back to April 1st turnover. April 1st, you know, completion, and, you know, the idea is to get it and use it on April 1st. So, if you're saying an entire season, you know, to get the sod to set, I, I, I hear you, what you're saying, so that means you should've had the sod down a lot earlier.
No. That's not my obligation. My obligation is that construction's on April 1st.
So, can you read, can you read the obligation on April 1st, what, what you're supposed to have? And the sod wasn't laid down till two weeks ago, which was in the mid, in the middle of April.
So, now, you haven't, you haven't accounted for the seven-week delay in getting my contract. You haven't accounted for the three-week delay with extra work. You haven't accounted for the delays that you caused me in not having an answer on how, how you were gonna deal with your building.
When you knew that you weren't gonna get it done, then apparently August 10th, did a contract receive, receive back?
No.
When, when was the contract received back from you? You said you didn't get your contract.
August 26th.
August 26th. So, you knew on August 26th there were gonna be delays?
There was a seven-week delay there.
You, you still accepted the contract, you still accepted the bid for Au, April 1st?
Counselor Keith, I believe Counselor Patch has the floor. You just have a point of information, sorry.
I just want, and I'll, I'll carry on, on that point for you. You did agree, you did agree in February that you would, you, you still, you said in a meeting that, that you would have it open by April 29th?
I said, whether dependent, we will make every effort to get this field done as quick as possible. That's always been what I've told everybody here. Not you guys, my, my, my...
Right, but...
...have been with you guys, my, my, over here. That's what I've told everybody, and we've done that.
But, you know, we paid millions of dollars to get this complex done. And I understand there's problems with the storage facility, building. But, the fields, the, those fields should've been done by the dates that was in the contract.
You're focusing on, on one thing. You don't understand how that affected the rest of the construction, how I had to leave areas open and couldn't fish, and how I had to leave fences...
There's a road that goes right up to the storage building.
You don't understand construction, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry about that, I, you know...
Well, you're just focusing on that one day.
Well, why didn't you have more people working there?
I had plenty of people working there. Matter of fact, I, I, at my...
Ask any, ask anybody, ask anybody that, that lives down in that area and lives, goes by there daily, how, how many people have been working there. You think I'm making this up?
What do you think, I'm making it up?
Yes! And I also...
It's like the hay walls. I mean, we've got plenty of people there. The weather has been lousy.
All right. Well, they, listen, that's, that's, we wanna know how we can continue here on, on getting this done for the Little League and to hopefully get a couple of home games for the Revere's girls' softball. It's the only Little League left in town, and, and it's a shame that these kids are playing on. You should see, I have a granddaughter that played down in Ambrose. I was at a game last Saturday afternoon. The, the fields are, are terrible. You gotta take them all over the city, and, and we were promised, they were promised, and, and we are getting the phone calls, the counselors, and I'm sure the mayor's office is getting phone calls. You know, and I, I really don't think he lived up to the contract, and I wish the mayor would, would look into it to see that fines are, are put in place. And, and the only, I'll leave one other, one last point here. Mr. Mayor, on the storage facility, on, we're, we're gonna have the same problem here next year if we don't get this done, the bid. As of, I checked, as of Wednesday, I checked, and there's no bid out yet for...
Right.
You already had, you already had a meeting in, from what I understand, in, in, you got a, you, you changed, you, you know what you wanna do as far as putting a structural...
Well, we don't, we don't know yet. There are multiple options that can be done, right?
Right, right.
So, there are different things that can be done. We can move, move storage bays into some of the, into the parking lot, so that cuts down the size of the, the building. We could use a, a stick building. We could, we can, there are things that can be done that we still haven't kind of vetted out completely. There are options that, that need to be vetted out, and then we can go out to bid on what we think the best option is.
Well, you don't understand how, you don't underst, well, of course you understand, how long it took for the other...
Counsel, I understand. I, I have two nephews that play down there.
I know that.
And I play down there myself.
You must be getting a lot of static. You must be getting a lot of static.
So, I'm getting, I understand, I understand.
But, it's the idea now, though, that if you don't get a bid out quickly on the new building, that whatever you're gonna do, that you're gonna have next season, you're not gonna have a building.
Right.
I mean, that's ridiculous. That shouldn't happen. It really shouldn't happen.
And I think one thing, one takeaway that we should, everyone should hopefully think about, is that at the end of the day, I honestly think that some of the dates were a little too ambitious, and I think that we, the city, overpromised early on in this process. And we've, you know, we've overpromised in terms of the timeline, even the fact that...
But, Mr. Mayor, he agreed on the timeline. The contractor agreed on the timeline.
That's fine, but I'm saying the city agreed to it.
Yeah, I mean, but he's the one that's gonna, he's the one that's gonna...
The city agreed to it.
Do the work.
The city should've known that there should be, there might be a season lost when we, going into this, going back two years.
Right, but we were...
We should've known, and the conversation should've been about, do we lose a season? Do we do this properly? Do we have the correct kind of timeline? Or do we, or do we not have that conversation? And do we overpromise and say, this is gonna be ready, and it's gonna be done, and it's gonna be, you know, done quickly and at the peril of your, of the integrity of the fields?
But, we didn't, we didn't overpromise.
Thank you, Counselor.
The contract overpromised.
Well, the city agreed to these terms.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Pass has been patiently waiting since the beginning of the meeting to speak him. We're now rolling into his zoning subcommittee meeting, so Counselor Pass, if you have any final questions and comments?
We've got a couple extra minutes on that, okay? Thank you, Madam President. Who, in effect, created this document? Who signed off on it?
The contract and the...
I mean, that seems to be the controversy here.
So, just in terms of this, the, there was a delay, and the delay was, you know, rightfully so by the folks who held out on signing it because the money wasn't available yet. The full amount wasn't available yet. So, the mayor signed this on August 4th. Peter Salem signed it on August 5th, and Frank signed it on August 4th. There were two other folks, Lord Giadella signed it on August 26th, and Marie Zalandi signed it on August 26th. And that, and that, that is because the money wasn't available.
Right.
The amount that was bonded by the city council last year was not, was not approved until August 24th.
Right.
So, in effect, we had a contract that was signed...
With no money.
With no money.
Right. Thank you.
Just keep that in the background.
The other thing is, can, Donnie, you bring us up to date about the COVID? Because we've had problems even before they did this job with the COVID, okay?
Yeah, well, I mean, some of it's on, I believe it's, I think it was DCR, the floodgate.
Yep, exactly.
I mean, we're not really allowed to touch it. I went out there trying to, at low tide, to try to monkey around myself so that the thing would probably function a little bit better. That's what I do. If I got caught, I'd probably be in jail. But, I mean, that's why, that's why, now, let me tell you something, so, don't kid yourself. Sorry to tell you guys, it's gonna happen again.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But, that time...
Point of information. Point of information. I don't think, I think you stated it a little incorrectly. It's not gonna happen again because we're gonna make sure whoever comes up here sets the correct expectation. There was an expectation to be met, and that didn't happen. And I know, and I understand, I understand things go wrong, but we need to open the line of communication between everyone.
You misunderstood me.
And that's all we need to do going further.
You misunderstood me. We were talking in the context of the brook overflowing.
Right. And it floods all the time.
So, in the current, let's go back to the brook, to that subject. Would that happen again? No. We don't set out to, we set out to try to adhere the contract. I didn't write the contract.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily agree to the contract. I certainly didn't agree to the job going out without the building being put out to bid. The way it should've went out, it should've went out as either one package or two bids, okay? And I didn't agree to that, and, you know, maybe we learned our lesson on that one. But, as far as the brook overflowing, it will happen again. That particular day, it was about three inches of rain. You had all the runoff from Malden, Everett, and what have you coming down the brook and Revere, dumping into the brook, and the floodgates malfunctioning. So, plan on it, happen it again.
I'm familiar with the Sherman Street, et cetera, and the brook, okay? Until you get an agreement with DCR, that we can...
Oh, absolutely.
Set a DPW down there. It's useless.
But also, may I say something? You guys need to focus on that brook. You see the capacity that you're losing of the sediments and the material that's inside that brook? That's all lost capacity.
Point of information.
Thank you, Counselor.
First of all, let's get this straight. That brook right there, that's why we have a hundred million dollar decree against us because of the high chloroform levels. If the culverts are not clean, that brook is gonna overflow, period. That's a historical trend. If the culverts are not clean down on Assi Street, it doesn't matter about five inches or 10 inches of rain. So, whoever's not cleaning, whoever's not cleaning the culverts is the problem.
It's a state...
Thank you, Counselor, and no Counselor Pass.
And the other thing is, it's a state problem. Donnie, I wanna really commend you for, I think, a job well done.
Thank you.
Because we can't put kids in that field unless it's 100%.
Thank you.
Because of injuries and everything else.
Thank you.
So, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Pass. Counselor Morabito, and just to point, Counselor Pass has given us a few minutes into his subcommittee so we could finish this discussion, so thank you, Counselor Pass.
Thank you for allowing me this time, Madam President. I thought I wasn't gonna get time, that's why I jumped in there. So, I apologize. You know, you can sense frustrations high on all sides. Counselor's side, your side, with the mayor's office, and most importantly, the taxpayers and the parents who want their kids to be playing ball, being out there in the warm weather, you know, being healthy, you know? Everyone wants the same thing. But, we need to find a better way of communicating. Look at Mayor Arigo in the short time that he's become mayor. He has opened up the line of communication from, for City Hall to the constituents. He's opened up City Hall from, until 7:00 PM on Thursday nights, just so people who work until 6:00 or 5:00 have time to eat dinner and come and express their issues. Not only is he doing that, he's having ward meetings and taking the conversation to different wards. This is the type of communication we have to do when we have a project like that. And where you're the project manager, you should be the number one line of communication. No communication should be withheld from you at all. And I understand there were two different bids, but whoever was managing that second bid or that second piece of infrastructure, was there a project manager for that bid?
No, because it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't meet, it didn't come to conception yet. It didn't happen. So, there was no project to manage.
So, I thank you, guys, for coming up here, giving us some clarification. I'm sure people are still gonna be a little upset, but at least we, they have a better understanding of what went on. In the, are there, so in the new facility, the 750,000, that's gonna be a bathroom facility, storage, and snack stands?
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be a concession stand and rest, public restrooms. So, the idea, what we were trying to accomplish was that precast model that we have at the stadium. Pretty much, the life inspector's saying, these things is about, you know, 150 years. Last forever. A wooden structure won't last for much, but it will serve the purpose. And it will serve the purpose for at least 40 years, 40 to 50 years, probably, you know, for as long as we need it. So, there's, you know, you have to look at that. If you place a precast building there for, you know, $700,000, it will be there almost forever, as long as you keep it up. Nothing's gonna happen to that precast concrete. So, you know, pay now, pay later. I don't know. I mean, I don't, I'm not in favor one way or another, I don't care. Just give me a building to put on there, and it'll be put on there. But, I can't, we couldn't dance around that site, you know, the way we were going. It just, it just made things a little bit more difficult. I'm not here to blame Peter. I'm not here to blame anybody, you know?
Thank you.
And I'm certainly not blaming myself. I think I did a good job handling the residents. And that's the other thing. You know, I get calls, counselors, you know, about the residents, this, that, the other thing, noises, crickets, mice, whatever. How about this? How about a schedule? How about calling me for an onsite walkthrough? My door's open. I have my email, it's public record. My phone is public record. I mean, you could do that, you could reach out to me and be part of the group. No problem. I'm not hiding anything.
Thank you, and thank you again, Madam President, for allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly, you're hearing a bit of frustration coming from the city council. And it's no disrespect to you as a contractor, and it's no disrespect for the people that are under your employ. But, they're certainly mindful of the fact that there's youngsters that are at a certain age in their life that will never be able to experience this again at that location. And so, if you hear the frustration coming out, it's from real sincere, hot-level activity. And so, that's the sense of activity that you're hearing here this evening. I don't live next to this ball field, but I'm there every day. I have lunch at Nick's every day. And I stop and I look at it and I view it every day. I see the men working, and I did see a period of time, and I didn't know why, the absence, now you detailed that you were injured, that there weren't any activity. And we did experience a pretty mild winter, so we could've worked right through the process of it. But, you know, all due respect, it happens, that comes with the territory, but the, what we're saying to you is, we know the water levels, we know the experience with water there. I mean, it's no mystery to anybody in the city, especially the city council, very versed on it, and the mayor's office also. So, we are collectively trying to get this process done and seeing, how fast can we get our kids on the field? And we want someone to come up to that podium and say, play ball next week. And if there's, as Counselor Patch stated, if the turf has to be replaced next year, can you give us a dollar figure so we don't just throw out something foolishly and say, all right, it's $500,000 to resurface the project? We need to have monetary values placed on these particular questions because we have also responsibility to other taxpayers within the community who don't have any interest in this at all. And so, we have to be fair to everybody and make a, if they wanna use the term, a fair playing field for everybody. So, you're charged with a responsibility, we're charged with a responsibility, we have concern for our children, and certainly, we don't want our kids to miss out on any activity because they're limited right now. We experienced this year, last year, where we couldn't use the Ari Del Rosso Stadium because of this displacement. We knew that had to take place because, but now, look what we have. But, these kids are going up the line, and it's unfortunate for them.
Let this be a lesson to us. When you're talking about a natural field, we have to, we have to kind of bite the bullet on it, and what we should've did is, we should've told the parents that we needed the field turned over earlier. That's gonna be a big surprise to everybody, but let it be a learning lesson to us. What we needed to do is take the field over. There were two fields there, they're gonna get three. And the big picture, if we started in the spring, or started right after the winter of 2015, the field would've been done. It would've been ready for spring, for April 1st, no question about it. But, we, you know, we relented to the league, and as soon as they got off there, and we waited for them to take their banners down before we could get on to, you know, and empty the refrigerator.
Yep.
So...
Well, I'll be out there watching tomorrow to make sure everybody's working.
Just a point of information.
And hopefully, we get this particular problem resolved as soon as possible for the kids of our community.
Right.
Point of information.
And Don, please, take this the right way. The banners had nothing to do with anyone waiting. No one waited for banners.
It was just analogy.
I was, one of the persons taking banners down, and we, once we were told any structures were gonna come down, the banners were taken. The field was, the league was asked to be off to completion, completed by July 1st, they obliged. They obliged by July 1st. Nothing happened till October. And, but that's besides the point, that's already in the past. I have two, one question and one statement, if the contractor...
You have a point of information, Counselor. There's still several of the councils that want to, but I will get back to, I promise.
It'll be really quick. When is the completed, when is the completion date? The new completion date? We want it set in stone. When is it?
That's, Peter, you need to answer that. Huh? You do?
When you guys sign my change orders, it's when you guys... We are doing everything we can to move as fast as we can out there, okay? I've worked since last year with $150,000 that I outlaid because I haven't had a signed change order. Okay, you guys are talking like I'm not making effort here. I'm making a big effort. I'm doing it at my dime. I took care of all your contaminated waste over there at my expense. I put up your parking lot at my expense. That's not in my contract. So, I'm working with you guys, and all I'm hearing is, you know, I'm getting bad-mouthed over here, okay? I've done a lot to help out this situation, and I'm still doing it. And you've had plenty of personnel out there. It's been raining nonstop. You can't do finished work in the rain, and that's what we're doing, finished work, okay? You can't do it. So, as long as it stays nice, we'll have field number two sorted by the middle of next week, Wednesday, Thursday.
Just the finalized completion date, and please...
I had to sit down to think, I didn't know that was a...
Well, you don't know that we would expect, we're paying you millions of dollars, you wouldn't expect us to ask for a completion date? That's not asking for too much.
Okay. You owe me two months. You owe me two months in delays, okay? So, let's put it at my...
I owe you two months of delays?
You owe me two months in delays. So, if July 1st was my original completion date, July, August, September 1st.
Point of order, Madam President.
Thank you, point, Counselor.
We were supposed to have documentation of the contract, A&amp;I and all the particular material regarding this, so we can speak intelligently about contractual agreements. Where are they? I asked Omar Bocali. I hope they're present.
Madam President, Omar Bocali?
Excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, we do have documentation here. We have thousands of pages worth of documentation. Both the city clerk and the mayor's office have been trying to produce that stuff, unless we're providing counsel with thousands of pages.
You must have a, you must have a contract.
We do have a contract.
And you must have a...
We do have a copy of the contract.
You must have a bid, our RFP. I mean, we should have that. I'm more than happy to have read it.
Madam President and council members, this is what we're talking about, this is the document, that's one copy.
Is that the RFP, or is that...
It's a contract.
I don't know, I know.
And this is the contract, this is one copy. So, I'd be more than happy to...
I'll take it.
...ask staff to make copies of this any day, what we had. It's not even scannable, so...
For you, Madam President, I mean, if we're being basically called out saying that we're incorrect in our commentary to this contract or regarding details of a contract in which you're performing things that are not within it, we should have that information.
Madam President, we'd be more happy to make copies.
With all due respect, this was asked for, what, a week ago?
And we have it, Madam President.
Yeah, that's great, you have it, none of us up here do. That's what was the purpose of this meeting, was that this stuff was supposed to be available to us so we could speak intelligently about the issue.
Madam President, I'd be more happy to provide a copy to the clerk. I mean, we're talking about tens of thousands of pages here.
That's not tens of thousands of pages.
Is there a way that the council could be presented with a summary of just the key points of the contract so that we have a little bit more information like Counselor Keith stated about some deadlines that were laid out, and any other key points that may be useful for a conversation like this? Because I do have a feeling that we're already in 20 minutes of Counselor Pass's time at this time. This may be something that we might need to have a part to. I don't think this is something that we can come to an intellectual agreement within the hour that we've had, because clearly we have not. So, I think this is something we might have to have a second meeting regarding because clearly we're not getting anywhere.[1640.02]
Madam President, I believe he has one item in his, in his zoning subcommittee. I would hope that the, you know, the chairman could actually forego that meeting considering the pressing need of this particular issue. I asked for all A&amp;I contracts signed and approved. I asked for the architect and site engineers, which they're here, of course, and a plethora of other things. I mean, and this was asked on May 9th, so I mean, excuse me, I stand correct, on 13 days ago from May 9th. So that's a significant period of time. We should have this.
Counselor Pass, I'm aware that you have two items in your committee. What time would you feel most comfortable starting, seeing as we're already in your time right now?
Another 10 minutes.
Okay.
I would go, okay.
Thank you, Counselor. And thank you for your leeway. Are there any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo, I know you had a question as well.
Thank you, Madam President. I've heard a lot of stuff here tonight. I've heard why we've had delays. I think if nothing else here, we're not going to get anywhere as far as going back to what happened. Where we are, we know the kids are playing in fields that are a joke. They got no bathrooms. They don't even, they have, they have to leave the practice fields, the young girls and boys have to leave the practice fields to go home and go to the bathroom. And I have a motion in later to put porta-potties. Can you imagine? I got to put a motion in to get porta-potties. Nobody can solve this problem.
Counselor, just to maybe update you a little bit, I did speak to our Prox and Rec Department. We're going to have porta-potties available at all the, all the fields that, that dispersed, St. Mary's folks, children are playing in.
Beautiful.
I know there were a couple that are available in other parks, and I think the Whalen was the last.
Okay. That's great. Thank, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. That's good. I think if nothing else here, we got to learn a lesson here. We're in 2016. It seems to me we, we signed a contract that had no incentive, no disincentives. That's not the way you do business today. Today, you get jobs done on time, and you provide money to help that, or, or you penalize when that doesn't happen.